I've enjoyed the food that we've provided. And everybody can just come forward to the chairs at the front and then everybody can hear what's going to be, what the meeting's about. So just good evening. Welcome to the East Lac public meeting this evening. The meeting is open to the public and a warm welcome to everybody who's in attendance tonight. My name is Mary Lee and I'm the Chair of this local area committee. But before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I'm going to pass over to Jay from Democratic Services to talk about the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you, Chair. Please can I request everyone to switch electronic devices to silent mode to not disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The toilets, I believe, are past the kitchen in that second room. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcasts via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to being filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Any member of the public due to speak at the meeting who does not wish to be filmed should say so at the start of their speech. The Chair will then suspend permission to film their contribution. The webcast will only record their audio contribution. Members of the public are permitted to take photographs and to film or to audio record the business of the meeting in accordance with the protocol for webcasting. If anyone wishes to film or record this meeting, please make yourself known to us now. Thank you, Chair.
So the question is, does anybody want to film or will they intend to film any part of the meeting? Just let us know now. And please, if you don't want anybody, it is webcast, so we are filming, but if you don't want to be filmed individually by anybody, just let us know if you want to speak. So can I ask members and officers to introduce themselves and I'll start with Hudda.
Good evening, everybody, and Salaam alaikum. My name's Hudda Ahmed. I'm the East Local Area Committee Manager. And as you know, we cover four area wards. We cover Manor Castle, Arbuthnot, Richmond and Darnell Ward. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you. And can I ask all the councillors to stand up now so that everybody knows you can see you and just introduce yourself? And I'll start with Laura and just go round. Do you want to say your name? Thank you. Okay. Any apologies for absence?
Chair, I receive apologies from councillors Mike Dubble and Terry Fox.
And is there any reason to exclude the press and public? No, okay then. Any declarations of interest? This is from the councillors? No. So I hope you've all got copies of the minutes, all the councillors. And can we approve the minutes that were took on the 2nd of July 2025? Can we approve the minutes? This is to councillors. Yes, thank you. Any matters arising? No, okay. Okay, I'm going to pass over to Hudda now, who's going to give us our budget report.
Can you all hear me? Yeah, okay. So in your parts, if you've got packs, I refer you to page 11 of the report. And it starts off with saying that as a local area committee, we've been allocated £100,000. And what we have to do is we have to come back to these meetings and report back on what we've done with that money so far. Obviously, we've got the money from starting last April. It's gonna, and we have to spend it by next March. And if you look on page 14, I think it's 14. Yeah, sorry. If you look on page 14 and 15, it gives an explanation of the amount of money that we've spent so far. When I say we, I'm talking about local area committees. And I'm talking about the four wards that we work with. Darnell Ward, Park and Arbuthnot, Richmond and Manor Ward. And it gives a description of the amount of money that we've spent so far. Obviously, we've still got some money left to spend because we've got to spend it all by March next year. So what I'm asking for today, particularly the councillors, is just to agree that this is the correct figures. And also to agree that I will come back again in a future day to report back about how much money we've spent and where that money's gone to and what projects we've spent it on. That's all I'm asking you for today.
Okay, everybody? Councillors, yeah? Thank you. Next item, introduction to the event this evening. Hudda is, thank you.
Yeah, so for the next item, it says introduction to East Local Area Committee. So normally what we usually do is we, when we say we, the officers, we usually report back on the work that we've done so far. We talked about how much money we've spent, but also we report back on what work we've done so far. So what we decided to do this time, instead of me doing a PowerPoint presentation, is what we've done is we've done this report. And you should all have a copy of this report. And this report just talks about the money that we've spent and the work that we've done since 2021 up till now. I think it's really important to kind of understand and find out as local residents, as community organisations working in this area, to kind of find out about the work that we do and the impact that we have on communities. It's a very comprehensive report. It goes through and talks about what we do as a local area committee, who we are, talks about where we're located, our kind of underpinning work that we work to, how much we've spent so far from 2021 till now. It talks about some facts and figures about the area committee in this area, the four wards, not just Darnell. And then it talks about when we did the survey, what residents told us to talk about and what to concentrate on and kind of tell us about the priorities, that some of their likes, what they like about their wards, some of the improvements that should take place. And then it lists all the priorities that we've come up with and that we work with local organisations, that we fund local organisations to work on our agreed priorities. Then it gives some examples of the projects that we've done in Manor, in Darnell, in Richmond, in Park and Arbuthnot, all the way that we've done so far over the last four years. And then it talks about some of the funding and the case studies that we've given to some of loads of community organisations. And then we've asked communities that we've funded in the past to give their case study, tell us about the work that we've, how that work, our work and the funding that we've provided, how it's helped them. You know, people like Young Explorers, Woodthorpe, Arbuthnot and Tara, Matrex. And then we go on to, for each year, what we've tried to do is highlight some of the key moments, key issues and key projects that we've done over 2021 and 2023 and 2024. I'm not going to go all through them, but you're welcome to have a look at them. And then it goes on to explain the work that we're doing now from 2025 to 2026. It's still an ongoing piece of work for us. And I think as a team and as elected members, we thought it would be really important to kind of just say to people in one report visibly to kind of showcase the work that we've done so far. And in addition to that, what we've done today is we've invited some of the community organisations, some of the agencies that we work with for you as residents, as communities that have come to here today, to talk to some of those organisations. They'll showcase some of the work they've done. So what we're going to do is, I'll probably explain it now, Mary, if you want me to, is on the back, everybody's got a table, all the community organisations that we've funded over the last four years, they'll have a table. And then what we want you to do is to go and visit each table and spend about 10, 15 minutes for each table to explain some of the work they've done, how our work, how our funding has helped them develop and the impact it's had on the communities. You know, it's a bit like speed dating, you spend 10 minutes at each table and they will tell you to rotate. I think it's a good way for you to find out about the work that these community organisations and services are doing in this area. So yeah, and any questions or anything, just please come to me or come to the officers or the elected members. But you should have this report on your chairs.
Okay, thanks, Hudda. I'll take questions. We've got a slot for public questions. So if you want to save your questions to the public question, that would be absolutely fine, unless it's for clarification on anything that Hudda has said. So if it's about that, that's fine, just for clarification. Yes, I can see.
One or two?
Microphone's there.
Two areas or is it for all the shepherded areas?
So at the beginning, I said the local area committee, it covers four wards. It covers Darnell and including Tinsley. And it covers Manor Castle, Richmond and Arbuthnot, Park and Arbuthnot Ward. So it's covered in four wards. And this report covers the whole of four wards, not just Darnell Ward. Yes.
How are you going to divide that into the four areas?
Well, it explains here.
Do you know, separate Tinsley from the Darnell or is it included in one part?
Darnell and Tinsley are one ward. If you look in the booklet, it'll tell you what's happened in Tinsley. Okay, well, just have a look. I'm the councillor for Darnell and Tinsley. I'm the councillor for Darnell and Tinsley. We've got Caice down at the bottom, who's a councillor for Darnell and Tinsley. The other councillor for Darnell and Tinsley is the hearer and she's on holiday. So unless she can make it later, I think she might, she'll either be late or she won't be able to get here tonight. However, we've got two councillors for Darnell and Tinsley both here tonight. And I'm going to ask you to leave any other questions till public questions now and we'll move on. Just before we start the workshops and everybody has a chance to go and talk to all the groups, I'm going to ask Kinder, I'm not sure where he is, just to say a few words, a little bit about what he knows about the groups in Darnell because he works with all of them in one way or another. He's more active in some than others, but he works and he knows everybody. So I just want, if you can just say a few words, Kinder, here, sir. Thanks.
Keep to our notes, to keep second. Basically, I'm Kinder from the St Albans Church and we've been in Darnell, Attcliff, for five years and have the pleasure of working with lots of different community groups in the area. The heartbeat of what we're about is how do we keep it simple? How do we create a space for people to work together? Because we believe Attcliff, Darnell, which is our particular one, you want to add Tinsley to that, we do work with Tinsley, funny enough, or there's other areas, there's something about how do we unlock the potential that is in this area to focus on partnership? Because I can't do it on my own, a lot of people can't do it on their own. So something about tonight was, how do we do things together to better the area of issues that you might know that we don't? So what we're asking is, by the end of this evening, if there is anything in particular that you are doing that is, like, we want to bring the different ethnicities, the groups, the cultures, the different things together, let's share that with one another so that we can promote them within each other. When we were part of the ERF with Darnell Wellbeing, we got, whether it was the Christmas lights, the Eid lights, whether it was the Easter lights, whether it was the new gardens, the new pictures, it was about particularly the litter picking in Darnell and Attcliff. What was really good was the slogan that came out was "Our Darnell, our home", whether it's "Our Tinsley, our home", "Our Richmond, our home", there was something about "our home". And with that, we were thinking, one of the things we were thinking was, if we did something like a unity tea, an opportunity to gather people and just have tea, but meet your neighbours, meet local community groups and do something. So if that's something on your heart about doing something together in a community in a simple format, give me a shout at the end and we can have a chat. But yeah, if there are things that you are doing, please share with one another what those things are about, bringing the different groups together, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Kinder. I'm just going to pass over again to Hudda to give a bit more explanation about the workshop.
So if you're a community organisation, because I've already invited you to come and sit on a table and kind of talk about your community organisation, the way that you do, the impact it's had on the community. What we're asking the audience that has sat here is to go round each of those, visit each of those tables, spend about 10, we need to spread out as well, we don't want everybody congregating in one table. If you're spread out amongst all those tables that are there, some of the organisations are already there, like Darnell Wellbeing, I think Young Explorers are there, Darnell FA is there, DESA is there, we've got the Police, we've got the Somali Group, the Somali Development Group. And so I think we're going to have Duke Street as well, Duke Street's there. Sorry? The allotment project, sorry Gina, I can't forget that. So if there isn't enough tables there, if those people that are talking, if they go to the, you know, the reception area, there's some tables there. So the idea is that you spend some time in each of the tables. I think ideally we'd like to spend about 10 minutes at each table for that person to kind of describe, talk about, have a discussion about the work they do, have a talk about the impact it's had on the communities. And then once that's finished, we need to allow half an hour for public questions. We need to come back half an hour early before public questions. So to give an opportunity for people to ask any questions they'd like to ask. Does that make sense? Yeah? Well, I'll let you know when, what time is it now? If we spend, if we come back for seven o'clock, I mean, we might, we'll see how it goes. But if we come back for seven o'clock and then we'll take some public questions, is that all right? To see how it goes, but it might be a bit longer if we can't get it all through the tables. All right, thank you.
Fine. And just whereabouts in the Lac area you live, which ward you live in, that would be great. Tell us which ward you live in and just your first name is fine and we'll bring the microphone. So I'm going to start now, this is just a 30 minute slot. So over to everybody here, any questions from anybody?
Hello, thank you. My question is about flags that have suddenly appeared. Oh, sorry, yes.
Do you want to stand up as well because we can't see?
I can, I'll try.
Thank you.
If I fall over, I'll land on David. Yes, so basically, I'm Irene Day, I'm the Chair of Sheffield 50 Plus. And I'm normally talking just about old people, but I think this flag issue concerns more people. One of my craft ladies was very upset this morning. She's 93 and she lives on Strabberet Road. And one of these flags is on a lamppost right outside her house. And the flag on her particular lamppost is slightly lower than some of the others. Well, she lives in a bungalow and her bedroom's at the front. And the wind's been blowing so much, it's fending across the flag, across the lights, which looks like a strobe effect. So she's panicking in the middle of the night, thinking that this is an emergency vehicle, bearing in mind a couple of years ago, the house, one of the houses across the road was hit by an arson. So she's really quite upset about it. She asked me about it this morning at the craft group and I gave her the council telephone number. And she spoke to them today and they told her that nothing could be done and they said it wasn't a council issue. And she said, well, what's going to happen? And I said, well, we'll contact the highways department. But the thing is, there is legislation saying that flags shouldn't be attached to lampposts. You know, I mean, it goes under the highways act and under the town and country planning regulations. And it's there for a... Oh no, sorry. So I mean, the regulations are there for a purpose. That flag might be safe now, but when those little plastic ties break and the flag falls off, it could hit a cyclist, a pedestrian, a bus. Strabberet Road is a really busy road because it's a bush route. I'm concerned about public safety, but I'm also concerned that it's been used as a symbol of right wing racism. And we're a multicultural community and we don't need this. So I respectfully ask that you do something about it, please.
Thank you. I think if, I think if this lady's, if the flag outside this lady's house, on the lamppost outside this lady's house is causing distress for the reasons you've said, because in the middle of the night, it's causing a strobe effect, I think that it's quite right that we should take that down for that lady. In terms of other flags, if they're safe, we're not going to take them down. But when they become unsafe, then that's a time when we're willing to be and take them down. As far as the flags that have been painted on, roundabouts and concern, they can be very, they can be dangerous for motorists. So we are painting those out. Sometimes in some areas, they've gone back again, but we will continue to do that. This is going to cost the council some money, obviously, to do this kind of thing. But at the moment, we don't intend to just take them down willingly. But as people, if people say, can you come and take one down outside my house for whatever reason, we'll do that. And we hope that people will be respectful of that as well. In the same way that we are respectful of the flags that are flying at the moment. But if they are, do need to come down for the reasons, for any reason, in terms of health and safety, then we will take them down. So if you can give your, the address concerned to one of our officers, that would be great. And we'll see that that happens. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Don, lady here. Just, can you stand up, Don, and just say?
Mary, it's just, you know, following on from that, is that a proper council policy, Sheffield City Council policy that you've just said to us, you know, if they're not causing an issue, health, you know, health and safety wise to the communities, then they will stay, they will stay there? They're not going to be taken down? Those that are not causing a problem, that are not, you know, an issue with drivers and so forth, are they actually going to be, stay where they put?
I've just said what's happening. There are regulations about things that you put on lampposts. Don't ask me to quote those regulations at the moment because I wouldn't be able to. I'm sure there's umpteen regulations attached to that kind of thing. But the moment is that we are saying we will, once, if the flags become unsafe, we will take them down. Or if people say, please, take it down from outside my house, if that's okay. And we hope everybody will respect everybody's opinion. And sometimes it is a matter of health and safety as that individual in that house sees it. And that's something we have to respect.
On the same subject.
If any of the councillors wants to chip in, please do so, yeah?
I've got a different question, but this one is regarding flags. Coming up to Remembrance Day, the military would like to make sure that all flags are hung the right way up because about half of them are not.
Yeah, that is an issue. And it's surprising, isn't it, that people who are putting the flags up don't understand that? But nevertheless, we are going to do what I've said. The other thing we are going to, will be doing, and this happens every year, we put poppies up on lampposts. And this is, when we do that, we have gone to the council and said, can we do this? So we've got permission to do it, we pay for the poppies and they're going up in various parts of the city. It's sort of been a tradition for a few years and that will continue on the main thoroughfares through the city. And not every area does it and it's fine. If you don't do it, you don't do it, that's absolutely fine. If you do, that's good as well. Thank you.
This is quite a difficult question. You might not be able to answer it. I've answered this question Sheffield South East Lac. The question was, why is Darnell not included in Sheffield South East? As the government explains that Darnell is part of Clydebetts Ward. And the thing is, if you put, today I checked, I put this postcode here and it comes up, the MP for this area is Clydebetts for Sheffield South East. The government are a little bit confused as well for the simple reason that in South East, there is Bayton, Burley, Darnell, Mosbrum, Woodhouse. I was, one other thing is, I was an observer for the 19, what was it? For an election and I was an observer for Sheffield South East. Clive kept going around asking everybody how he's doing. Clive lost the postal vote. He lost the vote in Bayton, he lost the vote in Burley, he lost in Mosbrum, he lost in Woodhouse. Clive was really upset, he comes, he says, I'm going to lose. I said, hang on a minute. The first one that came from Darnell was 85% in Clive's favour. He smiled for the first time on that night, so he knew he was going to retain his seat. So the point is, people in Bayton, Burley, Mosbrum, Woodhouse don't understand that Darnell is part of their ward. And the council have got it very mixed up. So the thing is, before you answer any further, obviously this is something that the Labour Party executive will have to have a look at because it's not, it's very, what's the world? It's, for the electorate, it's confusing.
I'm going to bring all the councillors into this as well. However, it's got nothing, it's got nothing political about this. It was never based on constituencies. If I go back to, I think, 2000 and maybe 10 or 9, and if there's any Lib Dems in the room, they'll be able to confirm this. The Liberal Democrats developed the community assemblies and they decided there would be some community assemblies and they would be divided up in the way they divided up. When we brought the local area committees, that fell by the wayside during austerity. And when we brought the LAC SPAC, the local area committees in, we just based it on the same geographical boundaries. That was all we based it on. And it just happens, it just happens that Darnell falls into the, it was always in the East and East Community Assembly, East Lac and the others were, so it's never been political, never been based on political lines and it's never been a problem. But I'm going to bring some of the other councillors in because you will know that this Manor Castle was in central and is now in Healy. And Arbuthnot was always in Healy and Richmond is now in, is now in the South East and that was in, yeah. So, well, they don't need to be confused because their constituency is their constituency. And Darnell knows Clydebetts is their MP, absolutely, 100%, they know it. And I was there that night as well and I was there in 2000 last year as well, so I know what happened then. But anyway, I'm going to bring, this is Elle, who is from Manor Castle, councillor for Manor Castle.
Hello. In addition to being the councillor for Manor Castle, I'm also the Chair of Sheffield City Council's Governance Committee. And so in that role, I have some responsibility for thinking about questions like this and echo completely what Mary was saying. The way that we organise things within the council sometimes does map to ward boundaries or to parliamentary seats, but sometimes doesn't. Appreciate that for some people that might be confusing, but there's often a really good reason for why we do that. And as Mary set out, in the case of the kind of history of the LACs, they've come to exist like this. You'll notice that there are seven LACs and there aren't seven MPs. So we were never going to kind of neatly jigsaw them together. It's a different structure for a different purpose. We've got one of our MPs for Sheffield, covers Barnsley as well as Sheffield, it all varies a lot. Folks might or might not be aware that we're about to have a boundary review in Sheffield, which is where they look at what the boundaries of wards are. It's something that the Electoral Commission does, it's not a party political process, it's not even something that the council has much say in. But residents as well as others are welcome to submit to the boundary review your views about why your ward boundaries should or shouldn't be. If it, you know, doesn't make sense to you that there are houses on to the side of the main road that are in your same community, for example, then that's something that will be done through that. Just for the local council ward boundaries, not for the parliamentary boundaries. They're done in a different time and a different place, just to keep it interesting. You might also be aware that there's been some work done by some community groups in a kind of civic science way. They were doing what I think is fascinating, sort of like generated these maps of what they're calling Sheffield's communities. And some of you might have been involved, they did various workshops across the city and there was opportunity to be involved online as well. And they were asking people like, where is your neighbourhood? Where do you go day to day? Like, what do you perceive to be your geographic community? Ignore the lines that the government's put on the map, but like, where do you feel like you live? And they had loads of responses and did this very cool kind of visualisation of where people feel like they live. And then people could come in and label, give names to the places that they live. And they've come up with, I think it's 147 different neighbourhoods across Sheffield that are kind of generated by the public themselves, that people kind of feel an attachment to. So we're now trying to think as a council about, like, that's really helpful, like, rather than like, starting from where people perceive themselves to live. So that'll be part of the things that we submit to the boundary review, for example, to say, this is where people think they live. Could we have a politics map where people think they live rather than the other way around? But so it may be that in the coming years, both our ward boundaries... But so it may be that in the coming years, both our ward boundaries and the way that we think about the kind of names of places that we live in might change. The only other thing that I would say is we're also, you'll know, or those of you who follow this kind of thing very closely, might know that the national government has committed to doing some neighbourhood governance reviews, which will look at things like this, like, do these meetings work well for everyone? Could we be doing them better? How should we make decisions on a neighbourhood level? And so that might also look at, like, how do we pull together these neighbourhoods and communities that we've got across our city and what makes sense as a particular area? So suffice to say, in answer to your question, it might not make sense now. I can't guarantee it will make sense in the future, but it also might change.
Thank you for your, for what you said. Much better answer than Sheffield South East, which was, so much better answer. The thing is though, on the election, the Conservative candidate thought he'd won. He didn't canvass Darnall at all, so somebody made a mistake.
That's sad for him.
He'd won without Darnall. Missed it. Whoa.
The last time? Yeah. I just wanted to refer back to the, the flag situation. So we had a coffee morning last week, we had quite a few women coming. And the theme of our coffee morning was just increasing racism and how do we strengthen communities? And I think when we, I don't like to focus on flags because everybody has a right to do what they want. It's about what they stand for. And I think in Darnall and in Tinsley, what a lot of people are feeling, and these are the comments that came, is that we don't feel welcome here. We don't feel safe. We don't feel like this is our home. It would be really good to see a unifying statement from councillors reaching out to their community to let them know that you do feel welcome. Because you can't take the flags down in the sense that, you know, it means something to certain communities. But we can make it clear that they are not inclusive of all and what they stood for like a year ago is very different to what it stands for now. And that's the lived experience of people in Darnall. So a unifying statement reminding us that we are welcome, this is your home, and despite the flags being up there, you know, you know, just recognising that there is a message within there that is not acceptable. Because I think when we coin it on the flags, we're not actually addressing the issue at hand and that is people in Darnall and people around the UK, when they see the flags, they don't feel welcome and seen. And it takes us back to when my father was here and how he was made to feel. I think a lot of people are worried about their children. So I think a unifying statement, and this is what the women came, they're like, unifying statement from the councillors, you know, really reaching out and telling them that this is your home, that would be really impactful. Thank you for that. And yeah, you are welcome here, absolutely. And I know I can speak for the absolutely massive amount of good work that you do for people in Darnall, especially our young people, which we're really grateful that you do that, absolutely. But I'm going to ask Laura, another Manor Castle councillor, just to speak on this as well.
Thank you. We're dominating a bit, Elle, tonight, aren't we? Yes, if you look on the council's website, there is a statement on there that the leader of the council, Tom Hunt, made in full council last Wednesday, saying that people are welcome in Sheffield. We've got a long history of migration into Sheffield. My grandfather came from Ireland to work in the steelworks. Lots of the Yemenis came to this, to Sheffield to work into the steelworks. And don't forget, they came here because of colonialism. Yemen used to be called Aden, as many of you will know. And we colonised Aden, so they had the right to come and live and work in this country. If we go back far enough, the majority of people in Sheffield come from different cultures originally. But what unites us is that we now are proud Sheffielders. If you want to look online on Facebook, look at a reel done by Gary Neville, the England footballer. It's fantastic. He's a developer in Manchester and he took a flag down from his development site because he said it was put up with hatred. He said he's a proud Englishman who played eighty-five times for his country and is really patriotic, welcomes England flags, being flown with pride at football matches. But what he didn't want was flags being put up with hatred. And that's the difference. We are patriotic, we're all English, we all value the flag, but we want it to be flown with love and not hate. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. And absolutely right, people were asked to come to work here, weren't they? They were asked to come to work in steelworks, they were asked from Jamaica and the West Indies, as it was, to work in on the buses and to get this country back on its feet after the war, which they absolutely did. And they worked really hard. Lots of communities from all over the world have come here and put their heart and soul into England, into Britain, to make it well. And there's been a lot of, you know, each group that's come has sometimes faced hostility, but we have overcome that and we will continue to overcome that kind of hostility. Because there's more of us who don't like that than want to encourage it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I missed the main part of the meeting because obviously I finished work at six thirty and I dashed to get here. My name is Yvonne and I live locally. And I just want to raise my concern about the state of a restaurant in terms of the rubbish that we have to walk past on a daily basis. And it's not only the rubbish, it's the meat that is left in buckets outside on the road. There are maggots, there are rats. We phoned the environmental sector, got a reference number, we phoned again, I encourage other people to phone. When you're walking home in the night, you can't see, but we are walking and all you can hear is the maggots popping underneath our shoes and then we are going into our house. And I just want to know what the council can do with people, with organisations or businesses like that, who, what they display, what you can see on the road, is it really clean or is it safe to eat at places like those? We live locally and people are coming and they may not live locally to where they have their business. But we need to think about the people, what it's impacting on. I think it's health and safety and I wouldn't recommend anybody to eat at some of the places where I've seen what has stayed outside. We've gone in, I've been in twice to talk to them. Things are getting better, but it still needs to be better than that. And I know with the rubbish around the place, Kinder and his team, a lot of volunteers, they do their best to do litter picking. But when it comes to restaurants and takeaway, it needs to be better in Darnall. We're a community that needs to see, things are happening, I'm not against business, but it needs to be proper health and safety in what they do and serve people.
Thank you for that. And absolutely right, we should expect that our restaurants and our takeaways are up to scratch and we can go and safely buy food and take away. And I know everybody's, everybody's safe. If we have got any doubts about the wellbeing of a particular premises, then we can investigate and we can take away licences and, and, and give them, ensure they have got a plan to improve. So if, if you want to pass the details on to one of the officers of the restaurants or the takeaways that you're concerned about, Yvonne, that would be great if you can do that tonight. Or just contact me or Kai is here and Zahira will also, if you wanted to contact any of us, we can, we can ensure that we get our team down there to, to do that. We have got our environmental regulatory team, go all around the city inspecting premises like this regularly. And they have to have yearly checks, annual checks. And if a restaurant or a takeaway is, is not up to scratch, then they are given a plan. It can be closed down and then, and they have to develop a plan to get back up and running again. But any names, anything you want to pass on, please do that now and we'll make sure that they are looked into.
Hello. Sorry to interrupt. My name is Pfizer and I'm a college student attending in Sheffield. In regards to the English flag controversy, I believe I, as an artist, have an inside widely want to share. Main reason why these flags have been held are to scare people and scare them off. But I believe that there's a way that we, that a statement can't make, something visually, something that really shows Sheffield as the diverse community it really can be. If you don't mind, of course. What I mean to say is, as an artist, I, I talk to a lot of other people from different communities and cultures. For me, this is something I'm very used to. I was thinking, maybe we could do something visually, something related to the arts, like a mural showcasing all of Sheffield's cultures, showing that we're not scared of these people filled with hatred and rage and that we genuinely believe that hoping kindness will lead the way forward. As you mentioned earlier, most of you mentioned earlier, that community, that diversity is everywhere, it goes back well beyond us. I feel like the best way to, you know, critique this hatred is to, well, show them that love is power and it's, well, for what? Thank you. Have us done.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to ask if any of the other councillors want to chip in on this one. But we have got, you know, we, we celebrate all sorts of things in Darnall. We've got the Lantern Parade coming up on the fifth of November, that is local schools getting together. We, you know, to, to celebrate, I'm not sure what they're celebrating on the fifth of November, it's, but it's, it's to do something positive. It's to encourage people, young children, to get engaged in positive activities rather than anything else. And we start that at a young age. At Christmas time, all around our, all around our LAC area, we've put in place either lights or events to celebrate Christmas. Similarly, other times of the year, we've celebrated other, other events. This year, we had the Iftika in Urban Splash up the road, really well-attended event. Everybody loved it. But we have done other things as well. We celebrated the Queen's Jubilee a couple of years ago, we celebrated the coronation and there's probably other royal events that we've celebrated in the past as well. So there is all sorts of things. But any ideas that any group here have got for Darnall, I would love to hear about it so that we can really see who, who would like to get involved and what, what, what is it and what can we do? So if you want to, if you can, anybody, if you want to have those conversations with people here, but any, any ideas you've got, please get in touch with us. But I'm going to ask if anybody of the other councillors want to say anything? But I know because they all do things in their area and cohesion is really important, you know, absolutely important.
Just to say, if you go on the East Lac website, all the events across all the four wards will be there. There's a lantern parade in Manor Fields Park. Craig and Emma from MASP organise all events. They've got three coming up in the next couple of months. They'll all be publicised on the LAC website, East Lac website. So please look on there and see what's happening. Thank you.
Just, just to reinforce what Laura said, if you look at this booklet, it'll say, it'll talk about all the events that we've, that we've organised with local organisations. You know, the Tree of Hope that we do in Richmond, the Santa Grotto that we've done in Manor, we've had lights in Darnall and Tinsley and we've done Ramadan, we did the Iftar at Urban Splash. So, and we are intending to do more. So any ideas, anything that, please get in touch, get in touch with Elie Ma and she knows our contact details. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Madden. I'm the minister for the Church of God of Prophecy on Duke Street. I'm just wondering, when is the Park Hill Flats facing our building going to be opened yet again? Because I've noticed that all the trees that are lining across from us are terribly overgrown, particularly where the bus stop is, and for the users of our church and community centre. And that, you know, in the dark nights, they are hanging over and they've not been cut for a long time. Just wondered if anybody could give me any information on that? And yet again, the land next door to our building, we're still looking for the owner. It is terribly overgrown. The fencing that has been put up, the overgrown is pushing the fencing onto the pavement. And I am worried that even mothers pushing prams and things coming up and down that road will cross over into, or cross, go into the road. And I think it's dangerous that we're not finding out who owns that property next to us as well. Thank you.
Hi. I've reported the sewage that's dripping down there and I think that's been dealt with. Have you looked at the land registry? I can get the council to look at the land registry. And we've looked up, you know, but we're still not getting anywhere with it. It should be on the land registry, who owns the land. I'll speak to some of our planners, see if we can do it. If there's a fee for that, I'll pay, will pay for it, not me personally, although, you know, but the ward will pay for the land registry search. What we will do is talk to you about whether we can fund a contractor or if we can't enforce it and we can't find out who owns the land, we'll talk to you about whether we could fund a private contractor to come in and clear the land for you. Okay?
Thanks, everybody. And thanks, Laura. We're coming to the end of the half hour public questions slot, so I'm going to take one more question if anybody's got one and then close the meeting. And I can't see anybody's hands, so thanks, everybody, for your contributions tonight, especially the people who've come to talk about their organisations. It's been brilliant and it's great working with everybody down at that end of the room. And thanks, everybody, for coming and thanks to our council. And can I just thank all of you, and our officers, who put all this together and spend more time than you'd imagine putting this together for everybody. So I'd like to just to thank them.